Hello and welcome to the Iowa City City Council Work Session. Can everybody hear me okay? All right, well, happy that we are here tonight. We have some exciting things on our work agenda, which is going to start off with the Transit Study Recommendations by staff. I'm going to introduce our city manager Jeff Ruin to open us up there.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and nice to see you and the council here tonight. Very excited to be talking Iowa City Transit with you. As council knows, this is one of your strategic priorities. And our transit system is really a major key to our climate action goals in the future. So tonight's discussion hopefully is kind of a launchpad into reimagining what we want our transit system to become here in Iowa City. Just a couple of comments. One, we do have some pretty ambitious goals and you're going to hear about those in tonight's presentation. And those goals are going to be difficult to reach. It's going to take some significant changes to our system. And change is hard. It's going to impact people in different ways, but ultimately, the recommendations we're sharing tonight, we think will better serve the Iowa City community as a whole. And I think as we, as we look ahead in the next few years, if we truly want to reach our goals, we're going to have to be willing to invest more in our transit system. We simply cannot meet our goals just by realigning our routes and our fare system. So we're going to have to find those strategic opportunities to, to invest and expand our system. And we'll outline some of those options for you tonight to kind of kick off that discussion, which will be, be a long time. It will take considerable months for us to consider. You are going to receive a lot of material tonight. I think Darian and our consulting team will share probably over 50 slides with you. It is going to be a lot to take in. It may be overwhelming at times. What I would encourage you to do is if you have questions or if you need something repeated, just speak up, just unmute yourself and speak up and ask the presenter to clarify something because it's really important that, that you have a good understanding of what's being presented. And I understand that not all of you ride every route that we have and visit every neighborhood on the, on the buses that we have. So please do interrupt if you, if you have questions. And of course you'll have time at the end to speak as well. We're obviously not asking you to vote on anything tonight. We're really just looking for some initial feedback so that we can go and make refinements and begin to take these recommendations out to the public before we ask for that final vote later on this year or early next year, so that we can start to look towards implementation next summer. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Transportation Services Director, Darian Nagel-Gam, and she's going to kick things off tonight.
All right, can you all hear me okay? Okay, great. All right, let me go ahead and share my screen. And we'll go ahead and get started. Okay, can you all see my screen now? Okay, great. Okay, excellent, thank you so much. All right, so very excited to be here tonight. Again, I'm Darian Nagel-Gam. I'm the Director of Transportation Services with the City of Iowa City. And meeting me tonight is Thomas. I guard a planning firm. And Thomas has assisted well over 30 communities, small, big, any size throughout the United States to reimagine their transit system and including right here in Iowa. He helped out with a very successful transit system redesign in Ames. So although Thomas may not be from Iowa, be rest assured now that he has worked in both Iowa City and Ames. He is well aware of our friendly interstate rivalry. So that was fun to introduce him to that. And so what Tom and I are going to do tonight is we're going to walk you through the recommendations from our, from our transit study. So I'm just going to give you a brief rundown of what's on our agenda for tonight. First and foremost, we're going to talk to you a little bit about the background, just real high level, talk to you about our transit service in Iowa City. We're going to give you a bit of a project refresher. It's been a few months since we've spoken with you directly about the transit study. And it's, it's taken a little bit longer to get through it, of course. Due to COVID, we had to kind of press pause while we were working through pandemic operations. So we thought it would be good to give you a refresher on where we're at today and how we got to the recommendations you will see before you tonight. We are going to present the preferred alternative, which is really the recommendation for the transit system redesign. And of course, that's using all of our funding, our existing funding that we have today, our staffing, our buses, and all of that public feedback, that great feedback we got through our public input process. And this, this is the recommended changes to our system that we'll review. We also will talk through some recommendations regarding our stop infrastructure. We'll talk through what we're calling the vision for transit. And that's really, you know, of all the feedback that we create, feedback we got from the community, how we, we've sort of translated those into nine potential enhancements for transit or for mobility in Iowa City that are really outside of our current funding and our current funding, our staffing and our, you know, our level of equipment that we have. But they will be providing an overview of what some of those enhancements might be. And fair policy will be the next thing we'll just discuss really briefly. Really, we took a deep dive into our fair policy within the city of Iowa City and across the metro area and really looked at ways we can improve the experience for our customers and bring those fares and fair policies in better alignment. And then last but not least, we're going to discuss the next steps and where we go from here. So I will kick it off with some background. And again, this is just a real high level information on our transit system. So today we have 26 routes. We have over 600 stops in Iowa City. If you can believe it, there's 600 places where people can board and, and hop off transit. That is boils down to 20 routes on our weekdays. Our service hours are from about six in the morning to, we run about as late as 11 o'clock on weekdays, and that's just a few routes. We really only have about four routes that run that late. Really, most of our routes currently wrap up around six or seven. And then on Saturdays, we run six routes on our Saturday service. And that runs from about six to seven PM. And of course, at this time, we don't have Sunday service. We provide all of that service using 26 diesel buses. But I am so excited to tell you that next summer, we will have four fully electric Proterra buses on the road, replacing four of our oldest diesel buses, which we are very excited about. And we're working with Proterra on a daily basis to get those buses prepped, inspected and ready to roll for next summer. Of course, in addition to our buses and our routes and our system, you know, it takes a lot of employees to, to run our transit system every day. And from our administrators, supervisors, we've got 43 drivers, both part-time and full-time. We've got mechanic staff to make sure our buses are ready to go every single day. We've got maintenance staff, which helps keep our facilities and our buses sharp, clean. And now during the pandemic, of course, you know, disinfected, that's a big, that's a big priority shift in this year. And we also have customer service representatives who really help us with our customer service, anything that the customers need, call in about, have questions about routes. That's our, it's kind of a high level at a glance. And then this picture you see here is our transit system. So it's just a, just a real quick glance at our overall system. Each color is our route and that's kind of what our system looks like today. All right, let's talk a little bit about transit ridership. So last fiscal year, which would have just ended as of June 30th, we served 1.15 million passengers in the last fiscal year, which is a lot of riders. That said, our ridership last fiscal year actually decreased 22%, which is double our largest decrease we've ever had. And it's probably not a surprise to anybody. And I'm talking to you right now, but it really, it was the pandemic. The last four months of the fiscal year were under a state of the pandemic. And really, our daily ridership during that timeframe, those last four months, March through June, was 60, 70, 80% of what we would normally see. So we definitely, we definitely saw the beginning of the ridership hit in our, in our last fiscal year ridership. We do expect an even greater decrease in FY '21. And that's because as opposed to having one quarter of, you know, pandemic affected ridership decreases this year, this fiscal year, we expect that three or four of our quarters will likely experience ridership decreases. So it's, it's something for us to be, you know, aware of as, as we're working through this process. Outside of the pandemic, setting that aside, our ridership did decline, you know, 25% from 2009 to 2019. So, and you can see that, you can see my, my pointer there. That's really kind of the slow decrease we've had over the last 10 years. And there's a few factors that have been, that you can point to outside of the pandemic, of course. And one is competing transportation resources, Uber, Lyft, for example, any ride sharing. Fuel has been incredibly cheap for the last many years. And really, there's been this economic recovery past, post the Great Recession. So there's been a lot of more people able to have more choices in their transportation, able to afford vehicles for transportation and the associated costs. All right, so now that we've gotten through a little bit of that background and where we're at and high level overview of transit, we'll talk for a second about, you know, the project refresher. We're going to walk you through sort of what we've gone through in the last year to get to the recommendations where we're at. And first and foremost, to remind you of who was all on the team for Iowa City Area Transit Study. And of course, Iowa City wanted the deepest dive into our transit system. And we took the lead on, on organizing and facilitating the study. But we also partnered with the City of Corville and with the University of Iowa's campus operations for the study. And of course, we had Nelson Nygaard, the transit consultants on board. You're going to hear from Thomas in just a few seconds. And we had stakeholders from a variety of different groups and backgrounds that we engaged early in the process to really get a good, full and complete understanding of what the needs are for our community. And last but not least, the public. So we really tried to reach out to transit riders and potential riders because, you know, we really want to both make the service better for those that use it, rely on it every day, but really find ways that we can draw people to transit in the future. So goals of the study. All right, so I, I think we could basically boil it down to four main goals. And the first one is really to remove barriers to transit use. So one of the ways you do that is you provide faster, more frequent and more reliable, more on-time service. And going through exercises such as this, this comprehensive in-depth analysis is the way that you find ways to get to those ends. So that was one of our major goals. You know, we heard from the public, it's pretty clear that our system could be simplified in some way, just to make it easier for people to understand. That can be a barrier for people to choose transit or to use it more. We want to improve communication so writers have complete up-to-date information on routes, fares, stops, service alerts and trip planning tools. And we also really want to make our transit stops just more comfortable for use, especially our highest, our highest ridership stops. The second kind of big overarching goal and the reason we went into this in-depth study for the transit system is really to increase ridership. So, you know, I think we really want to make transit more dependable for those that rely on it, that need it, that use it every day. But we also need to think about how to make it an easier choice for other people. You've heard, Jeff alluded to this earlier, and you've heard us throughout this process allude to our very lofty goal of doubling ridership in the next 10 years. So, you know, the first step to, to a goal like that is to really take an in-depth look at your transit system, which is why we are where we are at today, having this discussion. And also, the Climate Action Plan calls for the shift of 55% of vehicle trips. So over half of the vehicle trips that you see every day out in the community, shifting half of those, over half, the more sustainable methods, such as biking, walking and transit by 2050, in order to meet greenhouse gas reduction goals. So again, another lofty goal that can be achieved in the first step really is to just really evaluate your transit system. And then in terms of ridership, last but not least, this was not on our radar. This was not a thought. This was not even, you know, it's something we could have imagined at the beginning of this process last year at this time. But really, recovering from COVID-19 ridership losses is, is a big goal of the transit study in my mind from this point forward. And quite frankly, I'm really glad we're in the position that we're doing this right now because I think that the transit study will help us position ourselves even stronger than it might have been had this happened five years ago. Or, you know, we have this, we have potential ways to help increase our ridership. And I think that's only going to help us recover faster. Third goal is just to really improve inter-agency coordination. And I know I've, I hear from the public and I know you all have heard too. You know, how can we make it a more streamlined experience for customers who travel across the metro area? How do we get more consistent fare and transfer policies? How do we make it easier for the public to understand all of our systems and our, all of our, excuse me, agencies and how they operate together? So that's been a goal. And that's why we were really happy to have Corville and campus onboard to help us find ways that we can do that. And then last but not least, leveraging technology. We're just, you know, trying to determine how we can use some of these new transportation technologies to help better serve community. All right, now that we've talked about our goals, two important objectives before we go forward. And these really kind of can almost summarize, you know, everything that we did with the study and with these recommendations. But our first objective was really to determine how we can best allocate our existing resources to improve transit. So what that means is how our current funding levels, our current staffing levels, our current capital, our current buses, everything that we have now, how do we optimize what we've got currently and create a really solid foundation for moving forward? That's job number one. Our second job was really to determine what enhancements we could make that would further improve our transit system, community mobility. You know, should additional resources be allocated? And what might those, you know, what might those needs be? Financial needs or investments, what might those need to be? So those are really our two, two main objectives. So we'll be walking you through how we use these objectives to present recommendations to you all tonight. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Thomas Whitman, who is the lead on the team that has been shepherding us through and the community through this process for the last year. He's going to walk us through the transit study process and up-to-date and recommendations.
And hopefully you can see the screen still that shows the ICATS process on here. And you know, I'd also like to say thank you for having me here to present this. You know, I want to start off by saying that, you know, we looked at, you know, this, the transit study and looking at, you know, three different buckets of, you know, data. It's like, what is the market for transit? How is your existing services working right now? And what are some of the priorities that the public has, you know, to help make service better and enhance mobility throughout the Iowa City region? I want to talk about each one of these a little bit separately and start off with operating data. The first piece of this is, you know, we wanted to see where are people using the service right now? How are they using the services right now? When are they using the service? So we looked at where people are getting on and off each one of the bus routes in Iowa City. And for that matter, the graphic that's shown on here shows this for every, you know, agency within the metro area. To help us understand, are there areas where the ridership's really high? Are there areas where ridership's really low? How well utilized are these services right now? We also want to take a look at, you know, how on time is the service? Is it reliable? Can people count on it? Or are there, are there areas and places where the services just isn't as reliable as it could be? We also wanted to understand what some of the priorities were for our existing riders. And with, you know, region-wide onboard survey to, you know, how are they paying? Are they transferring from one route to another? It really gave us a clue as to, you know, what are some of the things that we could do to existing riders, you know? We supplemented this with, you know, public input process to understand not just what we saw from a technical basis, but hear from not just existing customers, but also potentials about what some of the potential needs are within the region. And we did this in, you know, who, who are existing riders are. Thomas. Their priorities were, and some of the top priorities that we heard from them were, yes.
I'm sorry, Thomas, a couple of things. Would you mind going full screen with your presentation? Just starting that slideshow and then your sound is, your sound is cutting out as well. I wonder if you might take your video off and see if that, that helps just get, get your sound through a little bit better.
Can do. Come on.
And Thomas, continue whenever you're ready.
Screen, stop. Trying to figure out how to get this, how to get this full screen, so. Come on.
You should be able to click the from current slide at the top left of your screen. I think that.
Is. Is it full screen right now? No.
I think it was full screen until you just touched something.
All right, more, record full screen. Let me stop, share. Does that work? Is it full screen now?
It is sharing your screen and now it's full screen.
My apologies. All right, sorry about that. The second phase of this was the public input. And a public input was really help us understand what the objectives were and what some of the things were that we were trying to, you know, what, what did potential customers have to say as what some of the, some of their needs were? And this included having open houses, having stakeholder meetings, you know, having design your own system, you know, where it was an online survey where we got over 1,300 responses. We've looked at, you know, operator interviews and we, we talked with a series of, you know, social service agencies as well to help us try to understand what some of the needs were within the community. You know, we got, you know, over a thousand responses. We got, you know, close to 100 attendees in person. And we talked with dozens and dozens of folks, you know, to, to help us understand, you know, here's what some of the needs are in the community. Here's some of the connections that we can't make, that we would like to make. And here's how we would like to have, you know, Sunday service or later evening service or more frequent service, which were the most frequent comments we received from that. The third phase of public input came after we had designed a, you know, three different service scenarios that, you know, matched some of the things that we heard. And we had over, you know, close to 1,400 different responses for this. We have in-person meetings in January of 2020. And we also had an open house, you know, open houses at Iowa City and downtown Iowa City and Corville, as well as the University of Iowa. And we had close to 150 people there. So we looked at engaging the public before we made recommendations, as well as after we made initial scenarios to help inform what the preferred scenario would look like. One of the things we also looked at was market demand data. And, you know, this is, you know, to help us understand where are the opportunities, you know, for transit? Where could transit be most successful? Or where are there clues for areas that could support service that don't have service right now? So some of those, you know, we, we looked at, you know, were population and employment densities. Where, where do students live? Where do, you know, folks under the age of 18 live? Where do seniors live? Where do people with certain socioeconomic, you know, characteristics live? And the, the whole idea was to identify where are those gaps? And are there areas that we're either over-serving or underserving? Again, just to help us to look at, you know, is there a clue that we're missing with this? An example of this is the equity analysis. And, you know, this is, this, you know, looks at where, you know, lower income folks within the Iowa City region live. And, you know, this, you know, it's, you know, in this case, anything that's dark or brown indicates a higher concentration of lower income folks. And it includes, you know, some of the areas around the apartment complexes in south of University Heights, as well as around the downtown area. And this gives us a clue, it's like where are some of the needs that we have within the system? And, you know, are we serving these areas appropriately right now? We did this similar thing for people of color. And some of the same concentrations, you know, south of University Heights, you know, closer to, you know, you know, to Mormon track and Melrose, as well as in the south Iowa City area, you know, south of Highway 6, are concentrations of people of color right now. And again, we, we looked at this as like, are we providing the right amount of service to these areas right now? And are there destinations that people that live in some of these areas that aren't being met right now, that we can meet as a result of, you know, the transit study? We also looked at the individual performance of each one of the, each one of the existing routes. And, you know, the, in this case, we're showing this in terms of what is the cost per passenger? And these are only for weekday during the daytime. We're not including nighttime routes or the Saturday routes as a part of this, as a part of this graphic right here. But what it shows is that there's a wide variety between the cost per passenger for certain routes, such as the Free Shuttle and Oak Crest and Town Crest routes, and some of the worst, you know, some of the least productive routes, such as the Westport Plaza and North Dodge routes, that have a much higher cost per passenger associated with them. And if we look, remember this graphic in terms of, you know, Westport Plaza, North Dodge, Seventh Avenue, Manville Heights and Eastside Express, these are all routes that you'll see had the most changes associated with them, you know, from a recommendations perspective. And routes like Town Crest, Oak Crest and the Free Shuttle, which are routes that are performing the best in terms of how many passengers are carried, were the ones that in essence, almost stayed the same or had improvements associated with them. So there were some, you know, when we get to the, what the recommendations for are, there's a, there's a rhyme to the reason here, which routes were, you know, most affected by this. We used the information, the market analysis, the public input, as well as, you know, how each one of the routes were to develop three cost-constrained alternatives. And we, we define these as one of them focused on frequency, one of them focused on simplifying the route structure, but maintaining the coverage that's there. And one of them being an emphasis on improving weekend service, which was one, especially Sunday service, which was one of the big things that we heard as a part of our outreach process. And each one of these scenarios could stand up on legs. Each one of these scenarios had, you know, things that we felt as a team were good about it and things that had shortcomings associated with it. But it represented the best practices and guiding principles that were laid out as a part of this process and we could implement these. And so these are the three different scenarios that we present to the public. And the preferred alternative, what we're about to show you, reflected what people felt was good and, you know, reflected the least amount of what people said, I can't live with this. This really hurts me as an individual, this hurts my neighborhood moving forward. So we got a really nice, you know, amount of feedback that said, I really like this in scenario one, but I can't stand this other piece. Well, I really like what you did in the scenario. Well, I really like what you did in scenario three, but you did it went a little bit too far here. So we could take the feedback that we got for each one of these. And develop a preferred alternative that reflected, you know, what we heard back from the community. So I want to walk through the preferred alternative now and what each one of these means. And so the things that the preferred alternative, you know, looked at focusing on and addressing was to make sure the buses ran on time, more so than what they do right now. Make the travel times more competitive right now. It's like make the service more faster than what it is. Address some of the things that we heard were confusing, you know, Darian had mentioned earlier on that, you know, there's only four routes operate on evening times or, you know, a limited amount of routes operate on Saturdays. And no one routes operate on Sundays for that matter, but, you know, to, you know, have improved services on Saturdays, improved weekend service. I mean, improved weekday evening services. And then also begin looking at where some of those opportunities are to address some of the job access elements that we heard. Including, you know, what we heard repeatedly was social, you know. Oh, so they're going to lower pay jobs. See what, you know, which tend to be service jobs. Didn't have the eight, the five shifts that, you know, the hospital that we, we looked at interest in improving frequency on two of the most popular routes and improving access to key destinations and reduce some of the duplication. Now, all of this in the preferred alternative is cost constrained. Which means that with the good, there's going to be some bad that comes with this too. And so there are some drawbacks to this. It's, uh, some areas and some neighborhoods are going to have longer walks the service over what they have today. There's going to be, there's less of a focus for a one seat ride, which means, you know, being able to, you know, not have to transfer to the hospital area from, you know, from Iowa City Transit, you know, perspective. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we could not, you know, we were trying to figure out, how do we make this pencil? But we could not make certain goals within the existing budgets, such as creating Sunday service or implementing Sunday service. We could not make that happen in the preferred alternative. So I want to share some of the highlights, you know, for the preferred alternative. Uh, I touched upon these a little bit earlier, uh, you know, some of the high, you know, we looked at addressing on time performance problems. Uh, this was particularly endemic in the afternoon. Let much less so in the morning time, but in the afternoon, we had a series of routes that once they got late, they simply could not catch up. And one of the things we found nationally is that if folks can't depend on transit and the bus is consistently late. Or it's late on one day and not on the other day, and it just varies back and forth. People are going to stop riding it. And so addressing on time performance and making the service reliable is extremely important. So some of the strategies we use to do this was to shift routes from major to major arterials. To improve the speed of services. We looked at reducing the amount of deviations into parking lots. And this is not just a speed element, but it's also given some of the pedestrian and parked vehicle conflicts in parking lots. This is a safety issue as well. And we looked at shifting services off of routes that we knew there was operational problems such as Lee Street, which are operators and mentioned on the Vanville, Manville Heights road route. That, you know, there were some turns in there and especially when it snows, it was, it was interesting to go down Lee Street. And there's also roads that we knew that was heavy congestion such as Newton Road. You know, where buses were consistently getting bogged down and not being able to recover later throughout the day. One of the other highlights is providing more direct service to major destination or popular destinations. And, you know, this is, you know, it could mean anything from service from neighborhoods such as Pheasant Ridge and West Iowa City. To the Walmart centered commercial area on highway six. This is one of the big things we heard is like, how can I get that, you know, better access? Not just to jobs, but, you know, to also to, to be able to take care of business. You know, if I don't have a car, how do I get to areas where I can buy something, you know, more than just a grocery store. We also looked at from a route design perspective, and there's a graphic that'll show this a little bit later on. Shifting service away from big loops that are, you know, going one direction and much of Iowa City's transit service right now focuses on big one-way loops that requires you in many cases to ride all the way around in order to get to your destination. You know, and this is a disincentive for, for existing riders. And in some cases there's like, you know, three routes in one area, but if you look at, well, one of them is only in one direction, the other one's in the other direction. And one of them only operates during midday. You have three different patterns to try to understand when you're only trying to serve one neighborhood. And so by making a one route structure that shifted away from loops to bidirectional service. So you could say, if I get, you know, catch a bus at this stop in my neighborhood in the morning. I'll return across the street, you know, so it's a little bit easier to understand. And this is especially important because 20% of, or more of your riders are new every year. And so you have to train a new set of riders every year, you know, to, to be able to understand your service. And the easier make it for folks to say it's, I can understand where I'm going to go and how I get back home. The more likely there's somebody is going to take that leap of faith to say, I'm going to use the bus today to try to get to where I need to go. One of the other elements, you know, highlights of the preferred alternative is increasing frequency on some of the core routes. And, you know, there was a couple of routes that really stood out in terms of, you know, being good and this, you know, in terms of how much ridership they had. And we look at as a part of the preferred alternative to having a bus every 15 minutes from the Oakcrest neighborhood and, you know, the, you know, there's this cluster of, massive cluster of apartments. To both, uh, you know, the University of Iowa campus and downtown Iowa city. You know, so that we'd be looking at improving service from every 30 minutes to every 15 minutes on the Oakcrest route in the morning peak. And the afternoon peak. And likewise, we'd be looking at improving the service on the downtown shuttle, the free shuttle to every 15 minutes throughout the day. It's, it's 15 minutes most of the time, but there's these gaps that it's like 15 minutes for two hours and then there's a 30 minute gap. And so we'd be looking at creating consistency here so that if folks say, I want to pick up the shuttle. I know that it's going to be there every 15 minutes rather than say, is this the, the, the exception to the rule? Uh, we want to make it easier to understand. We also looking at, you know, creating a new 20 minute peak service to the lower muscatine route. This is what's currently called the mall route that serves Kirkwood Community College and South Iowa City. So, you know, improving frequency in there responding to both some of the residential development that's occurred there as well as the requests from Kirkwood Community College to say, we'd like to have more frequent service. You know, we, we have this partnership that we'd like to, you know, continue and, you know, with, uh, University of Iowa. It's like, you know, how do we get folks between our two campuses more effectively? And, you know, by creating additional frequency, we can begin doing something like that. But the last piece is, you know, we wanted to improve Saturday service and, you know. So every route with the exception of the free shuttle and, you know, the, the high school oriented routes would operate on sun, on Saturdays instead, you know, in addition to a weekday. So this is also an improvement on frequency, not just on a weekday. But also a tremendous improvement in quality of service for patrons and potential patrons on Saturdays. This, this goes into the, the last bullet here, the simplifying routes. You know, there, there's 26 different routes in Iowa City right now. I've worked in, you know, dozens and dozens of systems for a community the size 26 routes is a lot. And, you know, one of the reasons is that there's a different route for we get weekday evenings and on Saturdays. And by simple, we will look at simplifying the service so that somebody who comes new to your community can say, I have to learn one pattern to get from my neighborhood to where I need to go. And so, you know, we, you know, we'd be looking at, you know, not having consistency weekday evenings, weekdays and Saturdays. But also be, begin looking at keeping routes on, on arterials rather than going into neighborhood streets again. So people don't feel like, oh my God, this bus made a turn into a neighborhood that I've never been into. Am I going in the right spot? And, and certainly that's a fear with the current big loops that are, you know, happening right now. Will I get to where I want to go eventually? I think one of the last pieces is that we wanted, you know, currently all routes have a name. And we wanted to say, let's supplement the name with a number so that folks could understand. You know, it's the number, you know, that the number seven, uh, yes, uh, south, you know, lower muscatine route. Rather than the mall route. And this is, this is important because right now there's a lot of routes that have very similar names. West Side Drive, West Winds, West Hospital, Westport Plaza, I'll start with W. And, you know, I know when I started looking at the system, I got very confused and I've been doing this for 25 years. And like, how is somebody that hasn't, doesn't think about this on an ongoing basis? How do we not confuse them with very similar sounding names? And so adding a number to this is just another way we can, you know, make this easier for them and simplify things for potential patrons. So I, I want to give an example of what, you know, this is on the right-hand side. It's a map of the daytime routes. This does not show the week, you know, the evening or Saturday variations of this. But this is where service goes right now, the orange lines and it looks like a nice bolt spaghetti is the best way to put it, you know, circuitous routes. Service on neighborhood streets. Uh, you know, there's multiple routes on top of each other. And there's different alignments by different times of day. So this is what it looks like today. And this is what the preferred alternative, you know, looks like, you know, half the number of routes. Yet serving almost all of the same area. And I want to walk through the recommendations for each one of these potential routes and what each one of these potential recommendations. And, you know, do this and so that we show what the routes look like. We show, you know, a brief description of what the highlights of that would be and also begin looking at what are some of the drawbacks to it? You know, how many people would be negatively affected by this potential recommendation? So I want to start with northeast Iowa City, which would be served right now by, you know, routes two, 11 and seven and route three, which is a high school route. When, 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 when high school is in session. So the, the north dodge route. You know, is very similar to today's north dodge route, uh, you know, and the, you know, each one of the court street, you know, the court street route stays on Court Street. And, you know, extends a little bit further east and the Rochester route also extends a little bit further out to Scott Street. And I'll try to do this, you know, without the benefit of the graphic. But, you know, in essence, the route to the Court Street route consolidates the existing Eastside Express and Court Street services. And improves the midday service, you know, from every 30 minutes to every 60 minutes. And anyone who's using the Eastside Express right now, which, you know, on the eastern, in the eastern edge of Court Street. Would have their service during peak times also improved from a bus every 60 minutes to a bus every 30 minutes. The extension of the Court Street route would have a new terminal loop at Frohnhold's Miller Park. Which is, you know, currently served by the Eastside Express. The Rochester route, uh, it would extend to North Scott Boulevard instead of Amherst Street. And the reason for this is at the intersection of, you know, Scott and Rochester, there's a commercial and healthcare and healthcare node. That, you know, we wanted to provide closer service to. And we felt like we could do this, improve the speed of the route. Even though it's a little bit longer, Scott Boulevard is a little bit faster, you know, you know, than, you know, going on the neighborhood streets. And, you know, serve more people and extend the reach of who might, we might serve as a part of this. And route seven, the, you know, we looked at, you know, truncating it, it, one of the, one of the deviations on this in the prairie Dushin area. Yeah. To improve on time performance and serve the ACT campus during peak during the morning times and the afternoon peaks only. And continue out to Pearson for every, you know, every other trip, uh, you know, throughout the day. The frequency of both route 11 and route seven would be no, no different than what it would be today. Yet the east side loop, which is, you know, designed to serve middle school and high school kids would remain as is today. So what are some of the impacts on existing riders? And, you know, this is, you know, this map shows what the existing quarter mile walk shed is from today's stops and any shading you see in red indicates houses or, or areas that were previously within a quarter mile walk shed of an existing stop. And how many in a little bubble represents how many riders, you know, were in these areas that would have a longer than quarter mile walk as a result of this, this recommendation. So in the, for instance, in the prairie Dushin road area, you know, there'd be approximately 16 riders that would have a five to eight minute walk to service. You know, that currently have a much closer, you know, bus stop. And in the Huntington Drive area, there will be five riders. That would be affected by, you know, that would have negative impacts like this as well. In the southeast Iowa, you know. You know, region, you know, there's currently, you know, we're looking, the recommendations, you know, look at, you know, you know, changes or maintaining service on route, you know, route nine, the town crest route. You know, the, the route five, uh, the lower muscatine and south Iowa city routes. And also route 13, the South Gilbert route. And, uh, you know, let me walk through each one of these, you know, the route five, the lower muscatine Kirkwood route is, looks very similar to the former mall route, the town crest route, route nine looks, is very similar. So identical virtually to the existing services on the town crest. And the yellow line, you know, the route one, the south Iowa city line is, you know, a, a big change in south Iowa city from what, what was there today. And let me, let me talk about what that might be. You know, right now, the south Iowa city route, you know, is, you know, the recommended south Iowa city route. You know, consolidate services on the lakeside cross park and Broadway route into one route that operates consistently in one alignment throughout the day. The cross park route only operates during midday. The lakeside route only operates during a portion and lake operates. You know, only to some of the residential areas in, in south Iowa city and the Broadway route serves the south Iowa city area in one direction only. So we were looking at, you know, trying to take three different options that one has right now, depending on the time of day and the direction that you need to go. And trying to create a consistent alignment that operates every 30 minutes throughout the day. In addition to operating every 30 minutes through the day, one of the things we clearly heard as a part of our outreach process was access to jobs for, in, in certain areas was extraordinarily important. So we looked at extending the service that from south Iowa city into the Heinz Road industrial area. This gives additional access to to a grocery store, a fairway that's there and also to the job, you know, the, the jobs that are located in that area. So this was a better, we, we felt like this was a better way to not just connect to, you know, creating consistency to get to downtown Iowa city. But also other opportunities that this, you know, that we heard were very important for south Iowa city residents. To, to be able to say, you know, how can I get to where I need to go? How can I get to a job? How can I get to go shopping? And provide these folks that have very high need more options than what they have available to them right now. For the lower muscatine route, route five, this was an extent, you know, it's a taking route five in essence. And or the mall route, pardon me, and streamlining the route to remove some of deviations like into the mall. There, there, the ridership is, the mall is not what it used to be is basically the, the big step here. And, uh, but also look at, you know, how, are there any other destinations that we should be serving with this? And we added two different destinations, the corridors and the Bon Air Mobile Home Park. Uh, and by serving these two destinations, we've good, you know, bump the frequency up every 20 minutes on weekdays. Which is again, you know, not only improved service to some of these apartments and higher density area, you live in residential areas. But also has the additional impact of providing better service to Kirkwood Community College. What it also does is that the quarters runs its own bus right now from the quarters to Kirkwood Community College to downtown Iowa city. It allows a partnership or the potential for a partnership with Iowa City Transit, you know, to, to help fund that route. You know, so that there'd be one less private bus in, in downtown Iowa city. And those riders would be on Iowa City Transit instead of on a, a private route. And those riders would be on Iowa City Transit instead of on a, a private route. This similar type of partnership is in discussions with Coralville Transit at the Latitude Apartment Complex. You know, again, they have their own private bus. And it's really a trying to figure out a way, how can we make, how can we leverage some of the funding that the Quarters is spending on transportation right now? And have Iowa City Transit be the one that benefits from that, from a ridership perspective, as well as fully utilizing the capacity that is on that corridor. The, the other element, you know, other route in there is Route 9, the Town Crest Route. We'd be looking at no changes in alignment or weekday frequency over what's out there today. It's a good route. We wanted to keep it as is. And the last piece is the South Gilbert Route, Route 13. And this would replace Westport Plaza Service to the Coles Mobile Home Park. And would also address one of the other things that we heard as a result of this effort, which is access to Terry, you know, True Blood Recreation Area. This is not just important from a, providing recreational, you know, access, but also from a polling, you know, there's a polling place there. And this, I guess, will be a little bit important in a couple of weeks, you know, to, how do we provide access, you know, to an area like that? But it also provides additional capacity on some of the growing portions on South Gilbert Street. You know, where a significant number of new apartments have opened up or about to open up, you know, along there. How are we going to accommodate those, you know? What is the man going to be from those? And this provides some additional, additional capacity, you know, to, to some of these growing areas. So what does, you know, what are some impacts associated with some of the changes with this? With the routes here, some folks in the Sheridan Avenue area, there's about four of them would have a longer walk to transit. And in the Highland Avenue area, there's about five riders that would have, also have a longer walk to transit as a result of these recommendations. At the same time, you know, there would be additional access to the Terry True Blood, True Blood Recreation Area. And, you know, so there's, again, this is a trade off right here. It's like we're asking certain folks to walk a little bit further. But at the same time, we're able to get, you know, more frequent service on the Lower Muscatine Road, for instance, and service to a new destination that was a, a, a requested destination. In Southwest Iowa City, we're looking at, you know, having, you know, four different routes. One of them is the South Gilbert Route that we had just, you know, mentioned briefly there. The Oak Crest Route and Route 8. The West Iowa City Route, which is in orange. And let me just describe this right now. It goes from downtown Iowa City, past the hospital on Newton Road, and then continues west on Melrose. And when it gets to Mormon Trek and Roret, it splits. So it comes every 30 minutes north of Roret and Mormon Trek. And every hour, one bus would go to west, you know, to, on Roret Road. And the other one would go to West Side Drive. So that there'd be two different tails of this route, I guess is the best way to put it. And the combined frequency on the, the core piece is every 30 minutes throughout the day. You know, so, and, and the last piece is Route 12, which would serve the Pheasant Ridge area and connect it with, you know, the commercial area by the Walmart and some of the other commercial establishments here. And provide a more direct way from residents from this, you know, you know, very dense, in some cases, higher need area to get them to place the shop and, you know, potentially work as well. Before, you know, continuing the route into downtown Iowa City. So, you know, from what the specific frequency improvements are of that, you know, the Oak Crest Route's one of your best routes. Be looking at no changes in alignment to this. We'd be looking at, you know, operating every 15 minutes during peak hours. Just better serve these areas and to feed the ridership that's already there. Be looking at creating a, you know, the, the West Iowa City Route, which, you know, continues to provide service on Roret and West Side Drive, continues to provide a connection from Roret Road and West Side Drive to the hospital, which was one of the things that, as a part of our outreach effort, we heard loud and clear was a big priority for these neighborhoods. And, yeah, and then also has higher frequency throughout the day. I bus every 30 minutes along Melrose, you know, to, you know, between, you know, Mormon Trek and Melrose and, and the hospital, so that midday frequency would be improved as well. I touched a little bit about, about the, you know, big, you know, when I consider a big deal about the Highway 1 Route, Route 12, which is a new connection between West Iowa City and some of the commercial districts, you know, South and Highway 6. And it also, rather than, you know, looking at, you know, three different variations or three different large loops, you know, that is the Plainview, West Winds and Westport Plaza Routes. It consolidates it into one route that is easier to understand, serves multiple destinations. And, you know, you know, serves multiple different trip types as well. The last route in Southwest Iowa City is the Westport Plaza, is the South Gilbert Route, which replaces the Westport Plaza Service. And, you know, I, I think we touched upon that a little bit as well during the, the South Iowa City discussion. So I wanted to talk about, you know, also show where are, you know, who is negatively affected by these recommendations here? And, you know, the, along Melrose Avenue, you know, to the, to the west of the high school, there would be approximately 18 riders who would have a, you know, a longer walk to service. You know, and, you know, depending on where you are, it could be a much longer walk, a more than 10 minutes walk, you know, in order to access service. The Roret Road area, you know, there's some, you know, parts of the neighborhood that have service right now that would not as a part of this. You know, one of the reasons we looked at shortening this was this, this, you know, the current service in that area is the, one of the worst offenders for being late. And we needed to shorten the route to keep this bus on time, you know, during peak times. And, you know, last on Riverside Drive, we'd be looking at, you know, depending on, you know, either by the airport to the north, you know, closer to Highway 6, as well as, you know, south, you know, we'd be looking at up to an eight minute walk to transit for up to 10 riders. You know, as a result of the recommendation of changing the Westport Plaza Route. Got one more to go. You know, the Northwest Iowa City is currently served by, you know, Routes 6 or is by, you know, the Manville Heights Route. And, you know, we're in here, I just want to talk a little bit about Routes 10 and Route 6. And I mentioned Route 10 going past the hospitals and then continuing out to West Iowa City. And the other, you know, route is the, you know, what is currently the Manville Heights Route. We're calling it the Peninsula Route, Route 6. And you'll see that it goes directly into downtown Iowa City, rather than going into Manville Heights. And the reason for that is that, you know, Manville Heights has very, very, that the, the neighborhood has very low ridership. And some of that ridership can also be served by CAN bus services. You know, so the recommendation here is to have a more direct shot and a direct service into downtown Iowa City. You know, and, you know, to, for the, the West Iowa City Route, again, to continue to serve the hospital area before serving the Roret Road and West Side Drive areas. The impacts of this, there's approximately eight riders in Manville Heights that would not have access to an Iowa City Transit Route. But many of these, depending on where they are, would still be within a shorter walking distance to a CAN bus service that it would continue to serve the east side of the Manville Heights neighborhood. So with, you know, with that, I want to, you know, sum up, it's like, you know, we talked a little bit about what the routes look like. We talked a little bit about, you know, where they might go. This is right now a summary of the 26 different routes that Iowa City Transit operates right now. Six of them operate on evenings and on Saturdays. And there's a different route name for them and there's different alignment for them. And in most cases, the service during the midday is hourly. So, you know, this service is very much designed to get you to an eight to five job. But much less well-designed for anybody that has an irregular shift or even for students, you know, for whom, you know, getting to, to and from, you know, classes once an hour service is not, not, simply not that attractive. And the preferred alternative, this is the same summary, rather than 26 different routes, we'll be looking at 13 different routes with the same route alignment for weekend service, for evening service, as well as weekday service. And it's a, you know, we'd be looking at, in some cases, some consolidated routes with overlapping services to make, you know, additional frequency. But overall, seven routes would have either fit, you know, have more frequent service during the midday. You know, either 15 minute service on the downtown shuttle throughout the day. And then 30 minute midday service on, in South Iowa City, on Court Street, along Muscatine or, you know, along Oak Crest, Town Crest and in West Iowa City. So this is a, an improvement over what, what's there today. And it serves, it's a focus, more of a focus on not just your peak commuter services, but, you know, other job seekers, other types of service, you know, service jobs that may have non-traditional hours that are not as well-served by, by these types of patterns. So, you know, one of the, you know, challenges that we ran into, let me just make sure to miss anything. One of the challenges we ran into this though, and one of the things that we set a goal for ourselves, like, we really want to figure out, how can we address one of the top needs if for users or non-users, it was either one or, you know, the first or second priority? You know, the, you know, how do we afford Sunday service? And we looked at a scenario, it's like, you know, if we were to, you know, create Sunday level service, you know, identical to what the preferred alternative called for Saturdays, it would require about 12% of ICT's annual operating budget. And the question is like, well, can we still do that? And it was like, well, we could, I mean, we could cut back a series of things such as frequency on Court Street in West Iowa City and on Oak Crest. And we could delete service to, on South Gilbert, to Terry True Blood Recreation Area and Coles Mobile Home Community. And if we did that, if we reduce service on weekdays and Saturdays by doing something like that, we could afford Sunday service. However, the implications of doing that would mean that you would not generate as much ridership, you know, total. You would lose ridership, you would lose a lot, you know, a fair amount of ridership by doing something like that. And you would, you would lose some of the, you know, potential gains in terms of trying to serve a bigger market over what's out there today. So Sunday service is a big deal. And, you know, I've worked in a community of a similar size in Missoula, Montana. And, you know, we, we've looked at, we finally, it took years, but finally got Sunday service, you know, implemented after years of trying this, of trying. But it's, it's to do it in Missoula, it required additional resources. And here, the trade offs to provide additional service just using your existing sun, existing resources, the trade offs to provide Sunday service, what you lose is greater than what you would gain on Sundays, in my opinion. So it's an unfortunate answer. It's not necessarily something I want to be saying, but that's, that, that's, that's why the recommendation for no Sunday service within the constrained budget is in the, if preferred alternative. So that was a little bit negative, you know, in terms of like, we can't do this. But there are things that we can do as a result of this. And the preferred alternative will improve ridership because of the ridership increases that will come from Kirkwood Community College, the Quarters, the apartments on Oak Crest. People will ride more often or new people will ride that aren't riding today if service levels are improved in those areas. One of the other areas where ridership will increase is during the midday. It, it is, you know, the difference of hourly service versus service every 30 minutes is big. And not just that, you can get to a service job right now during the midday and get back home in the evening because the evening services have been improved and are more direct and come, become more, you know, you know, and are easier to access. So you could have non-traditional work jobs and still use ICT in order to get to, you know, there, there and back. And this is not just on weekday evenings, the same holds true on Saturdays, where the service levels, you know, it's very bare bones right now. We'd be operating every route that, you know, all but two routes that operate on weekdays would also operate on Saturdays in the preferred alternative. We have better access to areas of high need, you know, this Pheasant Ridge to shopping, you know, to shopping and, and jobs. South Iowa City to the Heinz Road employment areas, as well as an additional grocery store. And also, you know, for all these areas, the additional weekday evening and Saturday service. You know, by making the service more direct, less confusing, you know, reducing travel times, it right sizes the system for where you are right now. And it sets you up for that next piece, which is, how do I address some of the things we heard about that we couldn't afford giving our additional, additional resources or existing resources? Such as service on Sundays, such as service, you know, to new areas that are growing, such as Sycamore, down Sycamore in South Iowa City. You know, we, we can use this as a baseline and say, we've done the hard, the hard part, which is, or, you know, to say, services changed, the needs have changed in Iowa City, our route structures remain the same for decades. We can make a change to reflect what the needs are right now and build upon that for the future. And that's what the preferred alternative looks to bring. In addition to the preferred alternative, you know, we've got a couple of other things that I want to touch base on. And one of them is, has to do with transit stops. You know, the, one of the things that, you know, when we were doing our field work and going around, it's, it became very clear that, you know, there, you've got a lot of areas where bus stops are very close to each other. In some cases, you know, a tenth of a mile apart on Oak Crest, for instance, was one of the places we've measured. And this is one of the things that's always a trade off, where it's like, what's more important? Faster service on a bus or less walking for patrons to get to there? And depending on who you are, if you're, you know, if you're using a walker, your answer is going to be very different than if you're an 18 year old kid that's, you know, super spry and can, can walk everywhere. So finding the right balance is, is the real key here. But one of the things that system after system after system across the country has shown is that you can improve the speed of your vehicles and the reliability of your service by looking at consolidating some of the stops so that, you know, to find, you know, that to find that balance to say, you know, stops shouldn't be 100 yards apart or 600 feet away or 200 feet away or whatever that number is. But folks will walk a little bit further and most people are willing to trade faster bus service for a slightly longer walk. And so as a result of the transit study, we looked at, you know, opportunities to consolidate or relocate or in some case add stops to improve speed and reliability. These are suggestions. These are, you know, say, here's, here's where you have opportunities, you know, Darian mentioned there are 600 stops right now. 150 of them should be looked at in terms of, do we really need these? And, you know, and I'm sure like, you know, at least a third of these are going to say yes. But it's an opportunity that you look at, you know, it's like to say, we have an opportunity to improve our reliability, improves our speeds, you know, to make this happen. It's not just about the speed and reliability. It also has to do with the dollars that you have available to you to improve your bus stops. On the right, the, the upper left hand corner is a picture that I took, you know, this winter. Of, you know, here's what a bus stop looks like, this on Oak Crest Route. There's no amenities here, it's not ADA accessible. And, you know, the more stops that you have like this means that there's more stops, you have to upgrade to ADA levels. It's more stops, you're going to get requests for capital facility improvements too. It's, and, you know, it's, if we look at consolidating these stops, it means that we can concentrate where our capital resources go into areas where the, the stops are actually used effectively. We can, you know, look at, you know, improving, put shelters in place. If we can look at better signage, we can put heating, we can put lighting. We can put real time information at some of these shelters. And the, the difference in quality of waiting, for instance, in the stop to the upper left, to the stop in the lower left, it's like night and day. And, you know, it's like, where would, you know, where would you as a user feel more comfortable, you know, standing, waiting for a bus? You know, so this is, this is why consolidating stops, it's not just about improving speed, but then being able to focus resources in those areas that, that need, need the investment to improve so that bus riders feel like they're, they're valued and they don't feel like they're, you know, stand, literally standing on the side of a road, you know, unsheltered. One of the other elements, if we looked at this, and Darian also alluded to this, was the vision for transit. And this is, you know, we, in talking as the commuter, this is one of the hardest things about, you know, doing And this is, you know, we, in talking as the commuter, this is one of the hardest things about, you know, doing these types of plans. There's always more need than there is the resources to be able to do something. And so, you know, that the need exceeds the funding. And so if we were to say, you know, what were some of the big priorities that we heard? Or, you know, that's like, what can we do to improve transit? What what can we do to improve mobility within the region? And there's a couple of things that came up, and we have nine different, you know, potential recommendations for this. And it includes, and we'll go into Fair Free Iowa City Transit Service, that's, there's, I got a discussion on that a little bit later on. But improve, you know, increasing the number of corridors where there's a bus every fifteen minutes, not just during peak time, but during the midday as well. Implementing Sunday service, improving Saturday service, so operates earlier and later. This was, you know, one of the things that existing riders said was very important. Having service that goes later than ten PM. Either, you know, with on on weekdays or, you know, for anybody working in the restaurant industry, how does a dishwasher get home, for instance? You know, these are really important things, you know, it's like, so looking at what are some of the lower cost ways to be able to do this? And like an on-demand, you know, late-night service, for instance. Or how do we serve some of these neighborhoods that don't have the density for service right now for for a big forty-foot bus or a thirty-foot bus to go in there? But how do we serve some of these lower-density neighborhoods that, you know, said, we have a need for service, we want mobility too? And begin looking at on-demand type services, you know, to serve some of these areas. One of the things we also heard and, you know, was, you know, we don't want to go to downtown, you know, downtown Iowa City for every trip type. You know, why can't you put service between East and West Iowa City along Highway Six or up and down Scott Boulevard or First? Yeah, or Camp Cardinal, you know, so these are all, you know, looking at crosstown services, it's a fancy word for a route that does not go to downtown Iowa City. Is one of the things we also looked at is a part of the transit vision. And the last piece was a new Iowa City route, you know, route that would serve the South Gilbert Corridor, the Hy-Vee area, and then Sycamore, you know, you know, and then go further south in Sycamore than, you know, what the current Broadway Route and Lakeside Routes do right now. Get closer to the new elementary school, get closer to some of the where the residential growth, I mean, it's happening right now, but where even more residential growth is anticipated to to be happening. So really start thinking about, it's not just what can we do today, but starting to think ahead for the future of like, where are those needs going to be? And what what could those look like? Now, I think, you know, you know, the, this was talked about in terms of it's a big lift and, you know, there's, this number should scare, and it scared me when I first, you know, calculated this, but it's a big lift. If we did everything as a part of the, you know, the, you know, the vision for transit, it's close to ten million dollars in additional operating cost annually. And one-time capital costs of, you know, close to nineteen million dollars. And the the cap, one-time capital costs, you know, is includes electric vehicles, which are more expensive than, you know, than than regular diesels. But the capital costs, you know, are often, there's, there's grants that can offset some of this. So that the number looks big, but it's not something that you would necessarily be paying, you know, that or the taxpayers of Iowa City directly would be paying, you know, for for something like this. But this gives you an idea of like, what would it take to do each one of these? And, you know, it's in communities that we've worked with beforehand, when we've looked at what is the vision for transit? It typically said, what are the things that are most important to us? And begin biting off, you know, bite size, you know, and it's like, what can we implement in the next five years? How will we find revenue to be able to do these things? You know, so it's a, it's an ambitious list, but this is, you know, really, if you were to say, what did we hear? What are the needs today? What are the needs in the future? And how do we meet the goals that you've set out for yourself to double ridership in ten years? Here's a list of things that you can do in order to make that happen. One of the last things I want to talk about is, the last thing I want to talk about is the fair policy and the fair structure. And, you know, this is, you know, the, you know, one of the things that, one of the goals that Darian talked about was the improving the fair structure, making it easier to understand. And I wanted to, you know, give an example of, this is the overall fair structure. It includes Coroville Transit and Iowa City Transit. And you can see that there's what sixteen different categories and only three of them have compatibility between, you know, you know, intercity, you know, Iowa City Transit and Coroville Transit. But there's a lot of options, if you think about what an operator, you know, has to go through, it's like somebody flashes a pass or, you know, says, I'm only paying fifty cents. There's an opportunity for conflict here. And the other thing is, you know, if I look at, it's like, here's what the fares are, it's complicated. And if market research will show you that one of the things that prevents new passengers or new riders from using a service is they're scared of looking like an idiot when they get on a bus to say, I have no idea how to pay, I have no idea what my fare should be. Because there's, is it a dollar, is it seventy-five cents, is it fifty cents, is it free? I have no idea, you know, oh, it's three oh five, it's not free anymore, it was ten minutes ago. So it's, it's, what I want to illustrate here is that there's some complications in what the fair structure looks like right now and what the compatibility looks like. So we looked at, you know, several multiple different options to say, how can we simplify this? One of them was to say, do you need to have a fare in the first place? And so this is a big policy decision of, you know, should we begin looking at this? And I'll talk about the the benefits of this and, you know, what how, what's other agencies have their experiences been? And also what the drawbacks are associated with this. The benefits are simplified administration, you know, it's like, there is a cost to counting the money, there's a cost to having fare boxes, there's a cost for staffing, you know, to do this. Ridership and productivity goes up dramatically. Missoula, Montana, which is a system that I took Fair Free almost, you know, six or seven years ago, their ridership is up seventy percent, this is pre-COVID numbers, this is February twenty nineteen numbers, up seventy percent over what it was when we started. That's almost your goal of doubling ridership right there. And the biggest thing they did was get rid of their fares. And they also have a parallel university system that operates there. So it wasn't just snake and riders from the university system, it was the community stepping up. It also has operational benefits. There's less time spent, say, you know, paying the fare and the travel times are faster as a result. The on-time performance of Iowa City Transit's routes right, you know, before, while they were not paying fare due to COVID, service was significantly more reliable than what it was beforehand. One of the things that Fair Free also shows is that people will change their patterns if the bus is fair free. There's no need to pay, existing riders will ride more often and new riders will be attracted to this. And if you look at some of the things we've seen in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, you know, that's where University of North Carolina is, as well as, you know, Missoula, Montana, which is where University of Montana is, there is, it becomes a part of the local fabric. You know, that our buses are free, we can get to wherever we want to. And people respond to that, the Chamber of Commerce has supported it. It, it's a matter of community recognition and pride. You know, so on the other hand, there are some costs, you know, and, you know, that go along with the benefits. In the case of Iowa City Transit, for fixed route services, we'd be looking at between a seven hundred and one million passenger per year increase. Now, before twenty nineteen or before COVID, the average baseline I would say is like you were carrying about one point five million passengers a year. So with this, you'd be looking at adding between seven hundred and a million, you know, seven hundred thousand and a million passengers as a result of this. And it will cost you, you know, there's additional operating dollars, there's a couple of routes you'd have to operate more often and you'd have to replace the fare box revenue, which is about one point three to one point four million dollars annually. And, you know, we'd have to buy a couple of extra buses in order to make that happen. But for an investment, you know, of, you know, a relatively small investment, you could have a massive increase in ridership. And it is the, by far and away, the most cost-effective way you can take that step toward yeah, meeting your goal of doubling ridership in the next ten years. There will be implications on paratransit as well, so this is if the fare goes away on fixed route, the fare must go away on paratransit as well, and there's costs associated with that due to the increases in demand. So it's like, there's, they're a package deal. So it is a, it's transformational, it will, it can change things. But again, it's a, there's a cost associated with it. And it's not just replacing the fare box, but you're going to need additional buses, you kind of need additional operating dollars to be able to do that. You know, intercity transit, which is what I, you know, you know, the system in Olympia, Washington is a system we just took Fair Free in January of twenty nineteen. And in the first two months before COVID, ridership was up more than twenty-five percent. You know, so this is, again, is a huge opportunity to quickly increase the number of people using your services at a relatively low investment. But recognizing that that is a big policy decision, we wanted to also look at what are some of the other options to simplify fares? And so, you know, the goals, you know, for from a fair analysis perspective, we wanted to improve the passenger experiences, streamline fares, make it easier. And then also make it more affordable, you know, for low-income and disadvantaged populations. And what what are some of the options we looked at right there? This is the same table that showed the recommended, this is the recommended fare structure. And I think there's a couple of takeaways here, rather than, you know, just simply looking at every single line item on here. It's the consistency between Iowa City Transit and Coroville Transit. So that transfers are a possibility, that if the fares are similar, you know, whether it's a ticket price, it's a ten-ride ticket element, you know, whether it's elderly and disabled fares, whether it's low-income elderly folks, folks with a Medicare card, that the the fare is the same. So the confusion is not necessarily there in terms of, is my fare good on this? You know, how does this work regionally? So this is, again, a way to improve legibility, simplify things and and, you know, make the regional fare structure easier to understand. However, you know, this, you know, simplifying does, again, has a cost associated with it. And so we've looked at, you know, what would be the potential ridership increases or right, as well as the the cost increases associated with this. And the graphic right here shows some of those changes for both Coroville Transit and Iowa City Transit. And Iowa City Transit is the the red and orange colors. The the impacts of simplifying the fare structure would have minimal impact on Coroville Transit. And, you know, would have, you know, would lead to an anticipated increase in ridership for Iowa City Transit as well as a, you know, a need to, you know, fund a revenue shortfall of approximately fifty-five thousand dollars. But by doing so, you, you know, reduced, you know, the fares for some of those that needed the the most, you know, people with disabilities, Medicare card holders, seats card holders. You know, would all have lower fares as a result of this. And the there would be ability to transfer from one agent to the other regardless of what pass type you have. So I've done a lot of talking, probably too much right now. So I'm going to, you know, turn it back over to Darian to talk about some of the potential funding options, and I believe it will be time for a question and answer afterwards.
Okay, all right, I'm just getting everything situated, I hope you can see my screen now. Okay, so last couple of slides, really quickly, that we're going to talk about are potential funding. You heard of a lot of potential enhancements, some of those vision items that Thomas mentioned that we heard from the public, but we weren't able to to propose within our existing funds. So how how do we potentially fund some of these? And our goal, oops, excuse me, our goal tonight is not necessarily to just figure out how to fund all these enhances definitively, but really, we want to just pursue to that preferred transit system design alternative and really determine what enhancements you may be interested in moving forward. Ultimately, staff will come back with some more information on a few revenue sources. Because really, there's ultimate way, or there's multiple ways that we can, that we can potentially get this done, really. So some of those sources, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, we can't see your screen. There you go, thank you.
Can you see it now? Thanks, thanks, Jeff. So some of those potential funding sources include increasing parking fees to help with our operating expenses. Just one second here, sorry, I'm going to turn my my screen is now, now I can't see myself. Bear with me. Okay, there we go. So again, increased parking fees is a potential way we can help support some of those additional operating expenses. Thomas talked about a potential partnership with the quarters, or there may be other entities in the community that we could potentially partner with that would benefit from from our from our transit system enhancements. That's another operating expense that could be potentially covered through partnership. I know many of you sit on the MPO, the local MPO, Organized Area Policy Board. And so this may be familiar to you, but there's a federal surface transportation block grant funding source that comes from the federal government every two years, I believe is when we apportion it. And in the spring, there will be eight million dollars coming to the the metro area that can be used for either road projects or capital projects as they relate to transit. So that would be transit buses or transit facilities. So that's another potential upcoming funding source. Caveat with that is that I believe in the spring that we'll be programming out to the years twenty and twenty-five. So that wouldn't be a potential immediate source, but that might be one to think about for the future. Of course, as Thomas alluded to, there are state and federal grant funding sources, especially when it comes to buses. Again, those are the capital expenses. We were the lucky recipient of the Low No Emissions Grant, which is a federal grant funding source for the four new electric buses we'll be replacing buses with. So there, that's not the only funding source, but there are others we can certainly look into. We have received some much-needed Emergency Cares Act funding from the federal government that can be used for operating expenses or capital expenses. I I indicated it's sort of limited in terms of operating expenses because we do have, we were awarded five point one million. We have used probably about seven hundred and forty thousand thus far. And it's really meant to help us get through this pandemic. So there are funding, there's some funding available there, but it it's not necessarily guaranteed that it will go past the amount that we've been allocated today, but it is an option for capital and operating. Property taxes, of course, is another option for operating or capital expenses. There's also utility tax that could be used to help support operating expenses. And last but not least, sales tax, which could be used for potentially supporting operating expenses and capital. All right, so last slide, next step. So the reason we're here tonight is to bring you up to speed on where we're at with the transit study and to really get your initial feedback. I know we've just given you a lot of information, but that's really important to for us to determine the path forward. We'll also be planning for in-person and virtual public hearings, safe in-person, socially distanced and virtual public hearings in early twenty twenty-one to present the proposed routes, stops and service changes. We plan to do a full public outreach strategy to make sure people are aware. We're going to be distributing flyers about the events in multiple languages. The best practice for making this large-scale changes or proposing large-scale changes to your transit system is to really distribute flyers for each route that a rider knows and loves and rides all the time, so people can understand the changes. For example, the Broadway Route today and the South Iowa City Route in the future. And those are the types of materials we'd be translating in multiple languages as well. We'll be touching base with our stakeholder groups that we've been engaging. Well, we've got an idea to have an information booth at the interchange to connect directly with customers. And if it's cold enough, there might be some hot cocoa there to keep people warm. Direct outreach to our transit dependent populations to continue with that initiative. Digital outreach, legacy media, and, you know, on-bus, a bus enunciator messaging, which is, we've been cleverly using new techniques during the pandemic to help remind people to wear masks, but we can certainly also use that to help remind people about upcoming transit changes. So we're going to be developing a phased implementation plan, field evaluating and finalizing all those transit stops placements that Thomas talked about, those recommendations. We need, we need to get out to all the stops and really take a look at all of them. And then ultimately finalizing the ICATS plan and bringing it to the And then ultimately finalizing the ICATS plan and bringing it to the council for consideration in the spring with our eye on launching. The first phase of any transit system design changes in the summer of 2021. Last but not least, um, good news story is that we don't have to wait to implement everything in the transit. Recommendations from the transit study until next summer. We really think that some of the fair and fair policy recommendations that Thomas walked walked you through to help, you know, bring Corvall and Iowa City in better alignment could be implemented sooner. Um, it really went agreed upon by Corvall and Iowa City. So um, with that, I wanted to turn it um over to the council, and we'd be happy to answer any questions um or comments. That you may have about our presentation or the transit study.
Thanks, Thomas and Darian and counselors, we have about. Thirty, I'm I'm sorry, 15 minutes before we have to stop for a break for our formal meeting. And so we'll have a hard fast stop at 6:45, but um, this is a lot of information. It was a great presentation, so thanks to you and uh Thomas for really navigating us through this. I have lots of comments, but I'm gonna defer to our counselors first.
Well, I would just say, yeah, thank you very much to both uh Darian and Thomas. And as the mayor said, there is a lot of information here. I'm excited to to delve into this a little bit deeper and to, you know, kind of have the slides to go through at my own pace and review. So other than saying I'm really excited to see um. The input you've gotten and the strategies you've taken to try and meet a lot of the needs in the community. And your uh your reasoning and rationale for some of the things that are not in there, which I think is also very helpful. I guess I don't really have any more comments at this point other than thank you, there's a lot here, I want to sit down and digest it. And be interested in more conversation, maybe when we have a dedicated work session to this.
Yeah.
I'll try to keep my comments brief too, given the time constraints. But I I would say um clearly, one of the big moves that um I think we're being asked to consider is the question of free fares. And I I have to say I was. I think if we're looking at this in a forward sort of way, you know, with respect to climate change, quality of life, issues of equity. That a fare free service is very attractive to me uh as a way of increasing ridership. And making a statement about the direction we're going as a community. So that I think in terms of that big vision, that certainly is a very compelling one, and then the question is how do we pay for it? I certainly think trying to balance uh parking, for example, our parking rates um may be too low. And so we try to incentivize what we want to incentivize. And at least uh see if we can't rely on increasing our parking fees, which is all sort of within the transportation system to to make that happen. Some of the other quickly uh issues, I I really like the uh route reduction, it's a much more legible system. Uh, there is more um walking required, uh, so I would again speak to making sure those walks are safe and comfortable. Topography is going to be an issue, I think, uh as well. And if we have a way of putting bikes on the front of the vehicles, the buses, you know, and linking that um those longer distances by way of bicycling. That may not not be quite as much of a hurdle as it would be otherwise. The numbering system is great, I think that's much more memorable and easy to to understand as well. Uh, the transit stops, reducing the number, making sure they're attractive, comfortable. Makes a lot of sense, that really speeds up the the trips because you're not stopping as often. So you just need to make sure that that wait, where you're waiting for the bus is a really comfortable and safe place to be, as was noted. So I think overall, it's a really impressive um effort. Thanks to everyone for who participated and uh look forward to making action on this.
I would echo that, that I thank you, Darian and and Thomas for the presentation. I was really excited to finally get this information, long awaited. And I think it was you, Thomas, or you mentioned that it's been decades, the system that we have in place is decades and. And that's not an exaggeration, I know someone who drove bus uh over 30 years ago, and these routes are exactly the same. And the system is exactly the same as it was then, so uh it is high time for changes. And as as John Thomas mentioned, you know, to go from 26 to 13, that's pretty amazing, and that's exciting. And it seemed like it's really very well planned out and appreciate the information. And uh, we'll have to have some time, I think, to digest it uh and look at the financial aspect of it too, so thank you again.
I really think um. First, yeah, this is really amazing and great work, hard work, I don't know how you do all this, it's a lot. I thank you for bitting the time, uh, I guess this is took like your entire time, you you seem like you were very busy to put all this data together. You know, um, my only concern is um, of course, great job putting this out. Yes, I'm gonna echo everything other people said about how it's amazing putting this together. But you know, I I really concerned that I understand that you reduce the route to around 12 or 15. But my concern will be reducing a route, what about those route? It's just like uh what the people saying about this route that been reduced? And also, yes, talking about improving the transit when we uh when we first have this study to improve the transit. And we knew that this is will come with additional fund. To improve something, that means to put more fund into it, which is uh right now, it seems what I understood, even though I was. Most of the presentation, my internet was out, I did not hear it very well, but my understanding from. Well, from my meeting with the city manager and the mayor, that there is uh, you know, we using the same budget. Yes, to using the same budget to improve the transit. I guess using the same budget is never gonna improve it the way that we want. Because when we say when add Sunday service, that's money. When we say we want more uh like evening service, that's additional money. And when we we say we want like to add more route, this is money too. I understand that we we increase the frequency, but we are making people left out. I guess the survey mentioned that there's a lot people want Sunday services. Because those are low income people who need the services. After hour people who work after hour, people who really want to have more two job. One in the evening, one is a low income people. And they don't, most likely, they don't have a car, and I guess here in the city, we don't want to encourage people for the climate action brand to drive, of course, even if they have. So I I understand the budget is not enough, I understand we need from the calculation I caught. Is like 1.5 million to add late services, Sunday services and improve Saturday services. Around 1.5 more, uh, if I can catch it right. And also, you know, just like adding the the route that has been eliminated, I don't want to talk too much of that. But I want to hear from people, I hope the people that they use a route will be eliminated, they have to come out and tell us. Is this something really gonna be difficult and is this route was really a lot people was using it? I I hope they can come out and speak about that. But for me, I think this is great, as you know, like this, but we need Sunday services. We need uh Saturday services, uh, those people like improving Saturday services and adding late services. Those the most important who low income people always ask about it. And I think that's one of the thing that we, when we asked for this study, those was the main thing that we asked for. Uh, I hope as a council to think, I know that uh you guys are just waiting for our directions. You will do whatever the council come from, nothing against you all, but I'm really saying that council should. Think about those three things, late services, Sunday services, Saturday services, who those people? Low income, people of color, black people, and we are doing Black Lives Matter now. Hopefully, you guys think about this, thank you.
Darian and Thomas, I just wanna do maybe a quick clarification on on the words that are being used. And I know I used it, I said uh reduce, but I think it's uh a more clear would be that they're consolidated, they're being consolidated, the routes. You're not truly eliminating any any routes as such, but consolidating them. So there aren't going to be any routes that will no longer be serviced, is is that correct?
Yeah, so that's that's correct, um, Pauline. So really, the point was to to go to take a deeper dive into neighborhoods that had multiple transit routes. And look and see if multiple routes could be better served by by a reduction in the number of routes, but really making one route that's better. Um, and the the perfect example of that is in South Iowa City, really. There was there are three routes, there is Broadway, there's Lakeside, and there is um Cross Park, which only functions part of the day and had very low ridership. And I think it's because it's very confusing for people and they don't, they don't really understand where it goes. And both, as Thomas mentioned, both of those routes are loop routes. So really, people can get on the bus and then they have to go out of their way if they're heading towards downtown, for example, out of their way and then go back onto the downtown. So really condensing the routes into one really strong route that um provided direct out and back service on the same route. So it's very predictable, you know, uh, as Thomas mentioned, you're you're gonna get on the bus here, you're gonna get off um across the street at night. That was um, that's what, that's what we mean by uh reduction. So it's a reduction in number, but it's really a consolidation of service to to a smaller and more effective number of routes.
That's really is not my understanding, I hope you clarify this more to me because what I understood from the city manager. I told you I was off and on during this uh, you know, presentation. But what I understood that, you know, around from around 20 route become 12 and 15. And what I exactly, the example that the city manager gave me when I asked him the question, he said, some people have to walk. To go to that route that was close to them, but their route is no longer, the bus cannot come on that, but they have to walk like some distance. So they can catch the bus on the other route, that's what I'm understanding. I I don't know, you're using like some word that maybe is not clarifying exactly what what you meant by that, would you believe is explain?
No, you're you're correct, um, so there with the consolidation of routes um in certain neighborhoods. There it will require that some people walk further to get to that one route. So if there were three routes that canvassed the neighborhoods in a in a variety of different ways. And it's consolidated to one route, some people will have to walk further to get to that 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 one consolidated route, that is correct.
I wanted to give uh Councilor Weiner an opportunity before our time is up.
So I mean, I really appreciate the the sort of the structure and the simplification simplification of the routes. I've lived in a lot of cities and this one has always seemed this art for our relatively small city. This has seemed like a really almost opaquely difficult situation. I concur with the notion that it can be um, it can be intimidating to step onto a uh a transit. Any transit system, if you don't know how much it's going to be, or if you don't exactly know where it is or where you should get off. That said, what I heard from the beginning, from our city manager to the end from Darian was sort of here's what the current money would buy us. Um, and here is um what we can have in addition that we know you all want, but we just want you to know how much extra it's gonna cost. And I and I believe that I that I also heard the city manager say essentially, um, we need to think bigger. Uh, and I was really actually excited to see that there's a a number of these services. Such as Sunday service, improved Saturday service, late week, late late weekday service. That can be added on without additional capital costs. So I think it's a great starting point, and I think the framing of it for me, which is, as I said, you know, here's here's what, here's the money we have now. But and here's what we can do if we just, if we decide to invest more in it, is a is for me, a very good way to frame it.
All right, well, we are at our 6:45, and what I'm gonna say uh in regards to the transit study. Is I I really believe that we have to think with the end in mind. When we're thinking about this, we've already been taught, uh, we've already been shown future improvements. And I really believe that those future improvements, council, we really should consider them now. That would involve Sunday services, late night services, whether it's on demand, whatever the case may be, as well as um the fee, uh, the free fare. So I'll leave it at that, we need to dedicate a uh definitely a future work session to this. We're gonna go ahead and.
You didn't speak, uh, Mayor.
Um, oh, yes, I'm sorry about that, we will allow uh Councilor Burgess to speak. And then after that, we will end our time here and go to the formal meeting.
That's fine, Mayor, we can, we can pick it up later, I agree with everything that all the other counselors said, thank you.
Sorry for the oversight, all right, all right, so we're gonna go ahead and end our time now. Is there any uh pressing thing that anyone wants to mention before we go into our formal meeting? Any clarification of agenda will have to be done on the spot.
Eric, if I may, real quick, just for the anybody in the public that may be watching, if I suggest to council. I think we'll have some work session time, won't be a full session, but some work session time to continue this at at your uh October 20th meeting. I I think it would be good for our planning purposes, knowing that we have an implementation schedule and a budget um presentation that we've got to pull together in the next couple of months to. To follow up this presentation with the council discussion as soon as we can.
All right, sounds good, I I I think the council is pretty much open to that, I see some not enough hits, all right. Great, we will see you all back at 7:00 PM for our formal meeting and return it to the work session. So earlier today at 5:00 PM, we started our work session, and we weren't able to get totally through it. And so we're back at our work session, uh, just continuing um the work session. So I think what we uh where we kind of left off was definitely ending. Some comments to staff about the um transportation study. And we're going to be meeting again, we're gonna dedicate some time at our next work session uh to that topic, which will be, I believe, is the 20th. Of, yes, the 20th of October, so we do welcome people to come back to uh listen in on that work session. And also uh reach out to counselors, uh, if you have any thoughts and comments. All right, we're gonna go to the next item on our uh work session agenda, which is COVID-19. I do know that uh Councilor Weiner, I always count on it, uh, was gonna give some updates about COVID-19. Any other comments that people want to give related to COVID-19? All right, moving on to the next one is uh continuing our discussion um with Black Lives Matter and systemic racism. And I know that uh we mentioned a little bit earlier today that we're going to be having our last session. Within the public, our listening uh session, which is gonna be at the Dream Center and our, I know that Councilor Burgess just mentioned that. Can you mention that um is gonna be at the Dream Center and it's gonna be Thursday at 5:30 PM? Did you have an address for that at all, Councilor Burgess?
South Gate Avenue.
611 South Gate Avenue.
611 South Gate Avenue at the Dream Center, so please uh come out there. This is really an opportunity uh to speak to anybody from the community, but we're going to be also focusing in on our youth. So we're excited for that opportunity. Any other items um on the Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism that anyone want to mention for now?
Um, I would just mention that that I hope that we get as robust a series of applicants for. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission as we had for the Human Rights Commission. Uh, and um that I look forward to seeing what we, the applications we have um in in the next month.
I would agree. All right. We already went through the agenda items, so um don't need any clarification there. The info packets, we're gonna go through, we have three of them. So info packet number uh dated September 17th. And then info packet um September 24th. Now, I do know that we need to, well, September 24th, 4th. And we'll get to items one. And we'll get to items one and two listed below from the October 1st in a, in a minute here. Here another from September 24th. We're going to go to October 1st. And we will talk about IP 5, but we're going to talk about that. Well, let's talk about that first and then IP 6, that does involve, wait a minute, I am blanking on-
If you don't mind, if you can talk about the thing that I can attend and the thing that I cannot attend, leave it lost. Like, I can just look out.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think, think about. Yes.
That's item number two, Mayor.
All right, I was trying to figure out which, which one it was. All right, so then we'll do all but item number two. So I guess our city manager wants to talk, well, there was a memo from the city manager about the CARES Act. It's round three, Community Development Block Grant and CV funds. So can we get a little update on that, please?
Yeah, Tracy Height shoes on the, on the call as well. And as we had mentioned before, with the third round of CARES Act funding coming our way, we don't know exactly when that will be. But we, as staff, have suggested a small business support program. So if you recall, the first two rounds of CARES Act funds we've had, we've designated towards nonprofit funding and housing and utility relief. With this next round of 424,000, we're recommending to the council that we look at a, a small business support program. So Tracy has outlined what that might look like in a, in a brief memo. And we just want to get your, your comfort level with us running with that concept. Or if you want to press pause and consider other uses, that would be, this would be a good time to, to let us know.
I would just say I like that approach because I think that can also have a huge impact on individuals who are having problems making rent and mortgage payments. Because if, if these small businesses can keep, can keep people employed, then those people are going to be that much better off and much less at risk of problems paying their bills. So I think we've put a lot of emphasis, and rightly so, in terms of rents, mortgage payments, utilities, et cetera, in the first two rounds. But I think working with small businesses, and some of this is focused on those people with low income, wage earners, et cetera, I think makes a lot of sense. It could help us kind of in a double, in a double way here.
I agree.
Tracy, is there any clarification that you need or questions that you need answered in order to proceed with this?
No, as long as council wants to support a small business assistance program, we will work on administration of that, who we partner with to administer it, and then the program parameters. Once we develop that, we do have to do an annual action plan amendment. So you'll be, you'll be getting this back again at another council meeting. So hopefully it'll either be the next council meeting or the first one in November.
Okay.
I guess just one quick question I had, just to perhaps verify what is assumed here is, are these small business, small business owners-
My quick question I had to perhaps verify what is assumed here is, are these small business, small business owners going to be local?
Tracy, you need to mute your line.
Sorry, I didn't catch that. Are they going to be what?
Local. Are they going to be local businesses?
Tracy, you need to mute your line.
Go ahead and try again, Counselor Thomas.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that when we're talking small businesses-
They will have to qualify and meet federal guidelines, so-
Go ahead and try again, Counselor Thomas.
Okay, I just want to-
Okay, one more time, small businesses that are local, is that the case as well?
Businesses that are local, is that the case as well?
You are muted, Tracy.
There's a delay, so I, I'm not sure when I should start talking or not.
You are muted, Tracy.
Say yes.
I am now?
No, not now.
I don't know when I should talk.
Say yes.
Yes.
No, not now.
Okay, there is a delay. Um, I don't know why. So yes, we can put parameters on it. We can put, we can cap it to annual sales. We can cap it by number of employees. We can say no change. So we will, we will be developing those parameters, but the intent is for small businesses. I hope to God you guys all heard that. Okay.
All right. Any other thoughts on that item? Any other items from October 1st outside of number two, which is IP 6? Here and now, we're going to excuse our mayor, Pro Tem. Unless you have something else you want to mention, Mayor Pro Tem.
It is, this is the last item, right? I don't have to come back, do I?
Um, no.
Good night, everyone.
Yes.
And also, we finish early, hey, before mine, that's great. Okay.
Yes.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Night.
Bye bye, good night.
All right, so I think our mayor, Pro Tem, is gone. So IP 6 from the October 1st is the memo from the Neighborhood and Development Services Director, update on city assist to COVID housing programs. So maybe Tracy, did you want to give us an update on that or no? An update on that or no?
Sure. Lord, I hope this works. Just remember, I'm on a 15 second delay. So if you guys speak, I'm not going to get it for about 15 seconds. Okay, so at your last council meeting, you requested staff to reach out to our COVID relief agencies and ask if they needed any additional funds to help them with staff capacity to get the programs out to the people who need it most. So I spoke with Shelter House Community and Center for Worker Justice. Shelter House and Community both said no, they feel that they have adequate funds to administer the programs that they have. We did get a chance to speak about communities administering the first wave of funds, that first round of funds for 246,000. They, they've expressed an interest that when we renew the contract for 390,000, they won't be able to administer that just because they're in the process of hiring a new director of services, opening a larger second food bank site, and implementing new programming for their crisis intervention and mobile. They are working closely with Shelter House. And so they're going to work closely with Shelter House to spend the rest of the 246,000. And then Shelter House has requested to administer the second round of these funds, which staff fully supports. The state of Iowa has over 9 million in their first round of emergency solutions grant. It's through the CARES Act. And Shelter House is the regional sponsor of those funds. And they'll be hiring additional housing case managers. So they'll have the capacity to administer that second round. And they feel they have, they have sufficient administrative funds to do so. I did speak with Center for Worker Justice. They requested additional 8,960 to employ a full-time staff member for about 14 weeks, starting as soon as possible for services to get their, their needs out. Staff looked at it. Typically, we administer 10% or we allow 10% of the programs for admin. We do allow up to 20% if there's special needs. We typically cap it at 20%, that's usually the HUD standard for admin. So what staff was looking at is if we don't increase our allocation, but we increase the amount of money that we're giving for admin activities up to 20% for the funds that they, they've already administered that first 25,000, so now for additional funds. If we give them that ability to go up to 20% admin, that would net them about, I believe it was an extra $7,500 to contribute to admin. And that would be standard for what we do with our programs. And it's that balance between how much goes to direct aid and how much is used for agencies for admin. So that was our recommendation. In fact, they're, they're ready for their next allocation. They get up to 37,500. We're going to give that in one-third increments. So based on your guidance, we will process a check tomorrow for that additional 12,500. So it'll just be a question of, if you want to give an additional 8,960, that puts them up above that 20% admin fee. Or if you allow me to keep the same allocation, but go up to 20%, you know, switch that from 10 to 20. So that's what we needed your direction for tonight.
I'm going to start maybe on a little bit different angle on here. And I've talked to a number of the counselors about this prior to tonight. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with how we have even gotten here. In my almost 11 years on council, I don't think I've ever been in a situation where I've had a fellow council member working for an agency, and particularly high level in an agency, and coming and asking council for money. And while Mayor Pro Tem has recused herself and, you know, the city attorney has talked to her about that, and she's recused herself, I believe it still puts the council in an awkward position, being asked to allocate money to an agency that the council works for, in this case, is actually directing, at least temporarily. And I think it can look really odd and questionable to the public about how money is being allocated when it is this kind of a situation. So I'm really uncomfortable with the position that we are in.
I, I, I think I want to respond to that a little bit. I hear what you're saying. There is some level of uncomfort when we consider that as a fellow counselor coming to ask for money, we know that people within our, anyone on this council could, you know, receive CDBG funds, home funds. We could be a developer and we could get to funding, I mean, if we choose to do that. And there's no, nothing that says that we can't do that. And so I, I hear what you're saying as far as the level of uncomfort. But also, I think we have to look at the need. I think it's right to recognize her position, her role on council, how, you know, it's coming, her position with the agency, it is a not-for-profit. What I hear in what I heard from Maya, I believe that was her name, I'm sorry, Ms. Hernandez earlier, was just talking about that challenge of the individuals coming in, requesting funding from the center. And so we've already granted the funding for the center. I think what I heard them talk about is the challenges they're having just from an administrative side with all the needs. And it's just not, it is needing a, you know, needing a rental check, but there's other things that have caused them to need their rental check that is still COVID-19 related to some degree. So I am comfortable, as Tracy mentioned, typically it's 10%. I think the max is 20%. I am comfortable going up to the 20%, but I don't believe that because a counselor sits on our council, we all get water from the city. You know, we, we use services from the city and we pay for services from the city. And that's no different here, where we have a counselor on the city council and reaching out through her role or position indirectly, directly, whatever the case may be, that is requesting services. So for me, the 20% I'm comfortable doing. And I would just encourage other counselors to look at the need, recognize the person, the mayor, the, the counselor's role, but look at the need that's being asked.
I just want to slip in here for just a minute, Mayor, and just a, a clarification to, to what you were saying. With CDBG and home money, we could not do this because Mayor Pro Tem is in a, is in a decision-making position with respect to those funds. And the HUD rules are, the HUD conflict rules are, are quite strict. Because these are local funds, that's a possibility.
Thank you for that clarification.
I agree with Counselor Mims that this decision was just a little bit uncomfortable to make, since technically it was a request for funding for an organization in which a fellow council member plays a major role. However, I am very familiar with the work of CWJ and what they've done over the past few years to improve the lives of individuals in the community with the campaign to raise the county's minimum wage, the community ID program, wage theft cases, and support for the residents of Forest View. So I'm sure that they are doing what they can to assist persons who don't qualify, which is, those are the persons that we're looking at, I think, for them to help. They don't qualify for other COVID-19 financial assistance programs for one reason or another. Perhaps they're an immigrant and don't have adequate papers to qualify for federal programs. But I would like to see some data on the numbers they believe that they might yet anticipate that they would assist. Because I have no doubt that there are a number of individuals that'll need their help. But I'm not sure whether it would require a full-time position for that, someone dedicated just to the cases related to COVID-19 financial concerns. So I, I agree with Tracy's recommendation about the 20%. I mean, we don't want to go above that. That's the standard. But not really in favor of the additional 8960.
I just want to speak to what both Counselor Mims and Mayor Teague raised. I think what's difficult about this particular situation in terms of the conflict of interest is that this evening, we heard twice about the Center for Worker Justice's struggles with staffing and the limitations on that. And I think that just really makes for me very acute how, how, where, where that conflict is and what, what position we are now in in considering this request. So I, I just want to make that explicit because it is very uncomfortable. And I think we got awfully close to that, that threshold tonight. That said, I think that, you know, to, to what Counselor Taylor was saying about the number of individuals served, I, I very much believe that the type of service that the Center for Worker Justice provides isn't necessarily going to be that it's a great number of individuals. I think we've, we've heard very compelling stories about the amount of time that it takes in serving some of those who have the most barriers for accessing these funds and that it may be there are, there is additional effort required for each individual person. So it might actually take more time, more administrative resources to serve the same number of people just, just due to the barriers that they're facing individually. I'm also comfortable with the 20% threshold that, that staff is recommending here.
Yeah, I, I'm supportive of providing the 20% cap, up to the 20% cap. And I think what's compelling is, is the need and the work that CWJ is doing. So, you know, while I suppose in a best of all possible worlds, I would prefer that there be a cleaner relationship there, or no relationship at all, I guess you might say. But I'm, I'm, the, the more compelling argument for me is that there is a need and that CWJ is, is working hard to provide those services.
So I guess I echo what Counselor Burgess said. There's, it is uncomfortable. I'm, I've been thinking for some time, it's uncomfortable. For example, I stepped down from the Shelter House- from the Shelterhouse Board before I was sworn into council, so that I wouldn't have to deal with conflicts. That said, this, we're dealing with a very vulnerable population with very real needs right now, and that's why I will support the capping it at 20%.
And I'll just say, I will support this, and I agree that this CWJ is doing a lot of work with a very vulnerable population. The reason I started the way I was is I think it is important for this council to think about, I hope it's important for candidates for council in the future to think about what other roles they play in the community and the potential conflicts, and I certainly support and respect Janice for the fact that she stepped down Shelterhouse Board, I know that was a very difficult decision, and I think you and I talked about that before you made that final decision, and I think it was the right one. I think it's important as council members that, that there is, there is not, that we do everything we can to minimize that conflict of interest in the decisions we make, and I think that's particularly important in light of the political climate in this country right now. So I just, I felt it was really important to bring that to the forefront, I will support up to the 20% for the reasons that other councillors have articulated.
Any other discussion on this topic? I think, Tracy, you got direction from council to give 20%. And I would, I would just echo what councillor Memes just said, that I do believe that candidates that want to come to city council should really look at any potential conflicts, because it does put us in an uncomfortable position when we go to make decisions. All right. All right, anything else for tonight before 9 o'clock? All right, here and now, and we are done for the evening. Good night, councillors, and good night, everyone out there in Iowa City.
Good night, everyone. Stay well.
Yes, bye.